Big smile from Michael. We're in the small courtroom today.
Come here, come here, I want to get your close up.
We gotta get a close up.
Paul Alton.
We still have time.
Michael's in charge.
Oh, my gosh.
Well, no. I'm just trying to forward stuff to you.
Maggie's...
I sent it to you.
And I sent it out.
Anybody got nine o'clock yet?
It's nine o'clock.
Call me to understand from the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please, years of service recognition, Chad Weaver, five years. We haven't ordered yet. Would we be that lucky? No. We'll find it for you. Congratulations. Lori Shell, there's one for her. Kelly, this must be it. Chad Weaver. There you go. Kimberly, yes you are. Kimberly Harsham.
All right, I have a call.
Kimberly Harsham, five years. Marissa Ball, five years.
This is all children and youth, looks like?
Yes.
Kelly Panyer. Not here. Kelly's got 10 years. Lori Shell. 15 years. I did shake her. Robert Templeton, planning, 25 years.
Thank you.
To amend that, approve the minutes number five. What's the February 25th versus the 27th?
The 25th is the regular scheduled meeting.
That we can address. It's the 27th.
It is the special meeting.
Okay, let's do the 25th.
I make a motion to amend and not approve the minutes of the 25th. Commissioner Hall recessed the commissioners' meeting and opened the salary board meeting and it was seconded by Commissioner John Greck.
So we will approve February 25th meetings as amended. Any comment? All favor? Aye. On February 27th, we will not because we don't have a court. Six.
Item number six is listed on your agenda.
Second. Any comment? Comment? All in favor? Aye. Aye.
Make a motion to approve. Item number seven is listed on your agenda.
Motion to approve item number seven. I'll second. Do we have any comment? Comment? All in favor? Aye. Number eight.
Make a motion to approve. Item number eight is listed on your agenda.
I'll second. Any comment?
I'd like to...
Vera?
Yeah, hi. I'd like to say, this is to ratify the acceptance of the resignation of Laura Watts
Yeah.
in voter registration effective March 4th.
Correct.
That's when she resigned? But I thought she was... I thought she was here March 4th.
Hey, but do you have a comment?
Yeah, the comment is, why did she resign?
Don't know. Personnel issue, we won't discuss it.
And... And you're sure about that date, right? That she actually left on that day?
Pretty sure.
All right. And who's going to replace her?
Don't know.
Nobody yet?
Edna?
That was my question, who's replacing?
Don't know. My question, or really a question, following their line of thinking, is replacing... I'd like to suggest that the current board of commissioners has a conflict in appointing someone to replace this lady.
Now, that's been researched and that's not true, although you can make the comment.
I can make a comment.
Okay. Noted.
File to the Ethics Commission on... I think you have... It's a conflict, in my opinion.
Oh, and I understand why you would think so.
Yep.
But that issue has been brought up and I brought it up, questioned it myself. Received an opinion that it was not.
And who was that opinion from?
Our solicitor.
But I still want to note that...
I... I understand.
The conflict I believe you have is you're going to appoint someone to direct an election, the two of your candidates, and you have already declared a conflict.
I... I can't argue with it because I thought the same thing. It was a concern to me.
But you have no one filed, no one's filed a request to the Ethics Commission on that, correct?
To do what now?
File the request to the Ethics Commission.
Uh, no, we did not. We requested a legal opinion.
From your solicitor?
Yeah. Because it was... I...
I would suggest...
I can't debate with you.
I would...
Because I have the same concern.
I would suggest that the election board would appoint. Because the election board can't hire, but they can appoint.
Well, but see, there comes the rub. Only the commissioners have the authority to hire someone to spend the tax dollars to pay them. We cannot delegate the authority to spend tax money to fill the position. And that's where the little... Until you get to that point, Rick, I agree with you. I said, geez, we got a problem. And then I did some research myself. We asked the solicitor. And it comes down to the issue, who gets to spend the money to pay them? It's only us.
Right, as you say, you get opinions. I've served on the election board many times.
Yeah.
And we had an opinion. We had an... Matter of fact, when you two were elected, we had an opinion that we wanted to terminate the voter registrar.
I don't remember. But, hey, jeez, I'm wrong trying to do the right thing. Nobody wants a problem. We're just trying to get it done correctly.
Even the appearance.
I don't disagree with you. I agree. The public needs to have confidence in the electoral system. And that's what we're trying to maintain.
But the opinion we had from the solicitor at that time was that the election board could appoint.
Well, the law says they can.
The election board.
But there's a difference between appointing someone and hiring someone.
That's correct.
So there's a fine line and a distinction to be made.
I'm suggesting that you...
Hey, follow it up. We're, you know...
I'm suggesting you folks consider...
We are. We considered lots of things.
Letting the election board appoint.
Because we were unsettled by it. Edna?
I would like to know what Mr. Aney's concern is. Would you...
Well, we don't want the two of you debating.
I know, I just, I'm asking a question of the chair
Of me?
to know. You, I'm addressing the chair to find out what his concern is, to see if it's the same concern that the rest of us have.
Edna, I had the concern...
What is the concern?
That the appearance is, because the commissioners are up for election to them, that they would appoint or hire someone that would somehow conceivably engage in some type of conduct that would throw the election in their favor, so to speak, for lack of a better term.
Good, that's an excellent question.
Right, Rick, I mean, I think that's what everybody...
Can I comment on that?
Excuse me.
Yeah, please.
Please, I'm not... I want to...
I've served on the election board. We had a tremendous election from these... It was these two plus Lee and Allen. And we had a write-in. And I'll tell you that the voter registrar, director of elections, has a lot of ability to do things that... There were questionable things in that election. And we wanted to terminate the voter registrar. And we were told by the solicitor that we did not have the power to terminate him, but we could appoint someone. And like Michael says, I'm not going to vote to pay. Two guys do the same job. But my concern there is, just what he said. You know, if they appoint someone, appoint or hire, either way. If they appoint someone, who's to say, listen, if this election doesn't turn out the way I want it to, I'm not going to hire you after I appoint you? Or if they hire someone, it's like, hey, this election, you know, you're getting hired based on this election. And two of them are candidates. And Michael's already declared a conflict to the courts.
The appearance, for the same reason you're bringing up. I've been working with these two. I don't want anybody thinking that. That's why I did it.
And I disagreed with that at first, but I contacted an attorney and explained to him why that was. And I understand that.
Edna?
My, the, following the thought process, my question is, why are we contacting the county solicitor when the election board in Harrisburg is the person or persons to be contacted to find out where your standing is? Because it's my understanding that if you're part, if you're part of the process of running for office, you should have appointed someone when you took out a petition to do so, so that you would have vacated the spot and appointed someone at that point to fill your position. That was what my understanding is. And if that is not the case, then why the county solicitor? He's got his hands in so many pies. And I don't think that you can be jack of all trades because then you're master of none. And the go-to people would be the election board in Harrisburg. That would be who I would consult. Because that would then remove your participation in it and remove all doubt.
Okay, you're noted. Anything else?
Yeah. Am I correct if I say that when, because Maria, the two commissioners are running, they have to appoint someone in their stead?
Yeah, by law, yes.
Then how could you possibly hire anyone? Because you're no longer acting commissioners.
Then, see, that's not true. They're still acting commissioners.
But if there's some kind of a conflict and you have, the two commissioners are recused legally, how do substitute commissioners hire a new registrar?
Bruce, that's not what happens. They don't give up the right to be commissioners. By law, they can't be on the election board.
But the election board...
Is made up normally of the three commissioners, except in the year they are running for reelection. That's the law. That's what it says. Okay.
So then, the next question is, did you appoint anyone to serve in your stead?
I did.
What is the name of that person? And would they be able to act on your behalf?
In what capacity?
On the election board?
Yes.
Okay. Name of the person?
Carolyn Doolittle took it.
Okay. And there's no conflict of interest in that respect?
None that I aware of.
Okay.
Who were the other two, as long as we're talking about this?
I think Alan Peck, Gary Marcho.
And Larissa Fallon.
Fallon, yeah, Fallon.
Why three people when the only two are running?
Because I chose, as Rick said, so that there wasn't all this appearance to remove myself and have somebody in there. So that somebody wouldn't have anything to say about that. Appeared to be the right thing to do.
I have one more question.
Bruce!
What qualifications does this, does we stand in, have to have in order to be, to serve as part of the election board?
A member of the party for which they are being appointed.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, we have most, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item number nine.
Make a motion to approve. Item number nine is listed on your agenda.
I'll second that. Any comment? Comment? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Item number 10. No. This is, and it was supposed to have gone to, this is for item number 10. For flood drainage improvements. Did this go to the...
Absolutely, and it came back.
Is that marked up? Is there...
All the markings have been made.
And this is money that I understand is getting passed through to Tree含 in the Tri-Borough Municipal Authority. Well, is it Tree含 or the Tri-Borough Municipal Authority?
Tri-Borough is doing it.
But they normally pass through us to them. Why is it going from us to Tree含, to them? I don't see anything for Tree含 on here. Right? I mean, here's our city, there's the county, there's Tri-Borough Municipal Authority.
It's actually going through the Housing Authority. It's coming, everything is submitted to DCED through the Housing Authority for Tri-Borough. But the money will come through here to go to Tri-Borough.
I... Why were we, why... So where's Tree含 coming in?
It does not.
Ah, okay. Because I was...
Tri-Borough.
I questioned.
Yes.
What's Tree含 got to do with this?
Nothing.
Ah, okay.
Make a motion to approve. Item number 10 is listed on your agenda.
Second. Any com... Bruce?
How much is federal? How much is state? How much is county? And shouldn't that be listed?
Don't have all those numbers here and no, it doesn't have to be listed here. The total number is $358,950.
May I suggest that you table this until the public would have an idea of how much the taxpayer pays and how much the feds are paying and exactly where it's going?
Well, I'm going to suggest to you, the taxpayers are probably directly or indirectly paying for it all.
Yes, but normally you say, it says the county picks up X amount and the feds pay X amount and the state pays X amount. There's nothing here except we're getting 358, 9, the 358 plus. It doesn't even say who's administering it.
No, we don't.
This doesn't cost the county. This is... Go ahead, tell them.
This comes through DCED and it's state money.
Okay, but that should be here, with all due respect. Right?
No. It's all state money. It's no county money.
And who is, who is administering this?
Well, it goes through DCED.
Right, no, but in the county, who is administering this?
Tri-Borough Municipal Authority.
And it says that where?
Well...
That's my point.
In this whole pack of the stuff. Right here, Bruce.
Which we don't have.
Well, no, you don't.
So that's why I think...
I'm going to suggest to you that if you want a copy of this, you can put it in.
I want it as part of the record, that's all.
When we make the motion, Bruce, it'll become part of the record and... Where are we cross, crossed off here?
It should be in the agenda, that it's administered by and it's funded by. Rather, all you have is money and it's going to be spent.
You don't like the way our motion reads.
Correct.
Right, and you don't even read it. Can you read the motions so people can hear them? And they're short anyway.
It's on here, you can read.
Yes, but the public needs to hear it and also it's being taped so the people...
Your camera wants to hear. We made the motion, there it is.
The rest of the county would like to hear it too. Because they can't attend nine o'clock in the morning on a business day, a work day. So most people can't attend.
We have a motion. Second it, all in favor?
I have a comment also. I still have a comment.
Go ahead.
I'd like to know, for you to explain, what is the Tri-Borough Municipal Authority? Who are they? Where are they? And what do they do? And what is this going to do? It's a disaster recovery program. What are they going to recover? For almost $400,000? In some kind of flood drainage? Were they going to improve drainage in the county? And who is the Tri-Borough Authority?
They're in Susquehanna.
Land's Borough, Susquehanna and O'Callaghan.
It's a tri-borough.
And what do they do? I mean, I haven't heard that name before.
We noted your comment. We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Item number 11. Yeah, I... Every year we go through this. This burn ban. Normally, we, the law, we, okay, the county, fire, you're a forestry. We need something from them to indicate that there is a need for it. How do we know, as we sit here on March 11th, that we're going to need a burn ban from March 21st through April 20th? What if it rains every day? And that did happen one year where we put one of these in and all it did was rain and everybody came to our meeting and says, why do we have a burn ban?
Did the county receive the request from the local fire companies?
Yeah, it normally comes...
50% or more of the local fire companies have to request it.
Yeah, and the Bureau of Forestry. Go ahead, Alton.
That one brought up down at the Rustware Company meeting last night.
And what did they say?
Well, it just says that's when the ban was supposed to run effect. I don't know where they got the information on those two.
Yeah, I don't know either, Alton. Except here, you know, we've got some information requesting it. District forester supporting the county fire chiefs' request for a temporary 30-day burn ban. In the past, unless there are extenuating circumstances, 10 days have been allowed from when the burn ban is approved by the commissioners to when it goes into effect. Passed on March 11th, we go into effect Saturday. The county fire chiefs, they request the district forester to recommend a 30-day extension subject to the provisions of Act 1995-52, which lays out the law for when this has to be ended. Okay, if we pass this and it's raining every day, you're going to have a problem with the burn ban? You're going to ask, why do we got a burn ban when it's been pouring rain every day?
It's going to be burning if it's going to rain on them anyway.
Yeah, but your papers that you put in the corner of your garage waiting for it to dry up, you can't burn them.
Yeah, so don't pass it. Why do you have to pass it? It's a whole month. That's ridiculous, you know, a whole month. They should put a ban in when there's a problem, when there's a drought, when it's a dry season.
Do you want to look at this or do you want to point something out? Yeah, here, here it's a clinker. If you burn while there's burn bans in effect...
Yeah, you get fined.
The summary offense. $100 for the first offense, $200 for the second offense, and $300 for the third offense. Just seems premature to me. It requires a prior show.
That's why.
Okay, that seems to be the fault. Where is the resolution? So this says...
This is just me surmising here, but I'm assuming that because we have such a late spring, it's going to be a while before we get a lot of, like, growth back and therefore we may have a lot of, like, dead stuff rolling around for a long time.
Well, what I'm seeing here, I, we could say this a little better, but I get the idea of what they...
And who's requesting this?
50% of the fire chiefs in the county along with the district forester to recommend a 30-day extension. But what I see here, but I... The resolution shall require a minimum notice of 48 hours prior to the imposition of a temporary county-wide burn ban. So, I would say that may answer the question, that if it's raining every day, it will not be imposed. But it, because it will require 48 hours notice before it gets imposed. It will only be imposed if they determine we need it. So I think if it's raining every day, it won't get imposed.
Oh, okay.
Go ahead, Edna.
But you think. You don't know.
I ain't aware of that.
So when they come to give us a citation and a fine, we, who, what do we do? Tell them to go to the videotape?
No, just give him the bill.
Give him the bill.
If April showers bring May flowers, what does the prudent man do in early March regarding this? Because I have a feeling on March, what is it? Whatever that it begins?
21.
March 21. You're still going to have snow in the woods.
I agree.
So what, I mean...
But I don't think, it won't go into effect then, Bruce. That, see, I see a conflict here. I see the March 21st date with a 30-day extension, 48 hours.
So is there going to be a cover story on The Independent that says, "Burn ban lifted until such a date"?
It won't go into effect until the notice is given. I think that's a safeguard, Bruce.
That's good.
So can you put, why don't you put it in, add it into the...
That's not how you read it.
In the past, it's, the burn ban has gone into effect when the commissioners have adopted it. So you adopt for those dates and it's then in effect. I think that you need to adopt it effective day, 48 hours prior to. So if you did it on...
I say today's premature.
It is premature.
So what if we did it on the 25th or the 27th?
Look, the day may come where we do need it. I don't know. And we have to have it in place before that day comes.
So when is the next commissioners' meeting? What's the date?
It'll be effective Saturday. Through April 20th. I want to say we table this till we get this issue cleared up.
Yes, table it.
Do you agree? We have questions. I mean, it doesn't, I agree with Bruce, March 21st, there may still be two feet of stone in the ground. So do we need a burn ban? We go through this, every year we do this.
You go through this every year we do this.
I do it. Yeah, I don't like the burn ban.
I know you don't.
You got burning papers. They get big guys.
Or you could recycle. You could recycle. And pay for the recycling. Like most of us.
Here, ah, here it is. Even though rain or other weather conditions may incur during the 30-day period that reduces the fire danger, the ban will stay in effect for the full 30 days.
Well, there goes the exemption.
Yeah, I'm a... I'm going to make a motion, table it.
In the worst-case scenario...
Public comment.
In the worst-case scenario, two out of three commissioners could meet briefly in one afternoon and just send a notice out to the papers.
No. Bruce! What are you doing?
What's wrong with you?
Where'd you go? Bump your head? They would stop that, Bruce.
That would be a great idea. That would be your front page story.
Bruce, what you meant to say was, we would call a special meeting, two of us, soon. That'd be after advertisement.
I didn't mean go across the street and have coffee and just send the notice out.
Public comment. Edna.
Nope. Not me.
Oh, Vera.
I'd like... I still have some questions about the appointing of the election board. Is it just the commissioners that can appoint?
Yes.
There's no other alternative?
For us to appoint on the election board? No.
Nobody else can appoint for the election board?
No.
Because to me, that's still a conflict of interest. You're appointing the election board...
We appoint one of our buddies on the election board to make sure they rig the election in our favor?
Right.
Yeah, God, that's...
So can't you have... Can't you... There's no other thing... Nothing else in the bylaws that says somebody else can appoint?
It's in the county code. It's in the election code.
It's in the election code?
It's in the election code.
Which is what? A state...
State law.
A state law?
It's in perds.
And then I also want to say, if you got an opinion from your solicitor, can't you ask for a second opinion? Like, sometimes we all...
So can you. So can Rick. Party chairs can.
So I'm just suggesting that you can ask for a second opinion.
If somebody comes up with something different, we need to do it, we'll do it because we're only trying to do the right thing. Anybody else? Edna?
Could you cite the code that lists that procedure, please?
Edna, can't hear you.
Could you cite the code? The section of the code? Actually, the election code.
No, it's in 25 perds.
I know that, but do you know the subsection?
No.
Can you get that code for us at some point?
No.
Can we do a right to know? I guess we'll have to do a right to know.
That's illegal opinion from us, you can't.
Excuse me, that's not a legal opinion. It's requesting the number of the code.
That's requesting a legal opinion.
Opening law book?
Opening?
Yeah. I could tell you, I wouldn't give it to you.
When did they have the burn ban last year?
We had one. I don't remember the dates, Al.
They don't have it now.
We... I mean, we got it someplace. I don't remember when it was.
I should have asked down there last night.
Anybody else? We are...
Yeah. Have you spoken to any of our elected officials about some of the things going on here as far as they're still flaring in our county? We have a no-flare law that came in in January 1st of this year, if you're aware of it.
There's a no-flare law?
Yeah, they came in from the... Either the DE... That's the DEP, EPA, put in a law, no flaring, except under maybe special circumstances. So they started... They did flaring again in hot bottom about a week ago.
There's nothing that they can't flare?
There is. Well, then, can you look into that? Because if there is, and I'll have to bring you the law next time, the next meeting.
You bring it, we'll look into it.
But can you talk...
But I'm not aware of it.
You're not aware of it?
No.
Okay, well, there is. But have you gotten in...
Most of the companies don't flare anymore anyway.
That's because they're phasing it out. They've been complaints.
They don't want to waste the gas.
And they also don't want to continue the emissions into our atmosphere, into our air, and also for climate warming, you know? For the CO2. And have you heard anything new from your legislators about the royalty issues or any other issues in our county? Anything new?
No.
So no resolution on that?
I have not heard anything.
And any...
Not what I really expected.
And any reason why Alan Hall isn't here today? What's the reason?
He's caught in the airport someplace on his way back from a trip.
From a trip? He's caught in the airport?
Yeah. He's caught... Yeah, he got laid over. Okay, no other public comment? Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.